Welcome to the regular select board meeting on Thursday, December fifteenth. This is the calm before the storm. The snowstorm tomorrow. So. First thing is to set adjust agenda. We have plenty of stuff on here. Does anybody want to take something off?
We can take up the. The police department report and the road foreman report and then can just make it in one.
You're gonna just update whatever we need to know?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Take those off. Do we? Are we also expecting an electric department report?
Yes, now it's supposed to come.
Okay. All right, anything else? All in favor of adjusting? Or yeah.
Second?
On favor, please say aye.
There we go.
Aye.
There we go. That's everybody. Motion carries next communication in the audience. I think everybody's in the audience that I is here for a specific purpose, looking around, correct?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yay wastewater.
Waste.
We may, we may have a couple of doubt Casey may have a couple of downtown commission or downtown partnership people joined by zoom. So just keep an eye out.
You're here for wastewater?
I was actually.
Cause you threw me off because I'm tracking where you're wasting.
Yeah. All right. So next is select board to approve minutes from last time, which was December the first looked good to me.
Second.
Any? Oh. Any discussion or changes or anything? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, that's everyone. So minister approved next town manager's report given by David Upson, Jr. Over there.
Okay, so I'm just starting communications with the installer Brevin Systems to discuss the installation work for the network hardware that we.
Oh, yeah.
But that's going to be an ongoing project. I'm trying, I'm going to try to get it done before February when that's when we have our Lake East Center audit. That's when they're hopefully going to come in and do that.
And does that look like a realistic timeframe for on there?
So, good, yeah. I hope so.
Yep.
It's all inside work.
Right.
Without the thaw anything out.
Right.
Friends of the Jude divine request a letter of support for their CRRP grant application. Hopefully, we can do that. That's their nonprofit wing of the.
Wasn't I due today?
I don't think so.
Oh.
That's it's different.
Oh, there are different deadlines for different things. Okay.
Yeah, but maybe, I mean, I just was asked.
It's an unfortunate acronym that if you sounded out, it sounds like.
Community revitalization, recovery and revitalization revitalization program. We were gonna apply for.
Through the division libraries.
So what's this for?
No.
Or what's the grant for?
It's. For.
The addition?
Funds for the addition. It's, it's not under, we are not applying for the grant.
The friends are applying for.
But they're asking for a letter of support, which our policy is that we get to see the narrative before we get a letter of support. Because we've gotten into situations where there's mysteries about what the money gets used for.
Could we?
Not that I suspect that they would use it for anything different.
Right. So could we say that something like? We'd like, I think in this case where this is a so closely affiliated with the town, even though it's the friends, maybe would it be okay if we said something like?
I think it's time sensitive.
The town manager could write the letter so long as maybe he reviews the narrative before he sends it.
Yeah, we could do that.
We could.
Who are the friends?
I don't know. We could, we don't have to. Who are the friends?
Yeah, I don't know who the friends are. I mean, I know who the library commissioners are, but the friends.
Well, the trust.
It's a nonprofit.
One of the trustees are writing the grant, oh, one of the trustees of libraries writing the grant.
Okay.
But we've had, I think what Sherry is concerned about is we've had in the past, some entities apply for grant funding. We've given letters of support without seeing what.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, for sure. That is definitely it.
But if I.
So if you look at it and it seems okay.
There's no way involves spending any more tax dollars.
And.
Hardwick.
And.
Municipal tax dollars, what you're saying.
Okay, and.
I mean, I don't know where the library project is even at at this point. I mean.
Jody will be giving you an update tonight.
Oh, tonight. They just hired an instruction manager.
So we'll give.
So they've got.
We can ask Jody tonight.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we can, we can wait to have that conversation. Right, we can wait. This is just about the letters.
Yeah.
We can focus on that and.
Yep.
See it.
And I'm curious to know whether our community development coordinator knows about the grant that they've applied for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Got it.
So, so we'll talk about that again when, when Jody's here.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a fire department ladder pumper truck.
Yeah.
That is in the hospital.
Oh, no.
And the quote for the repairs forty grand.
Wow.
But we're talking about that if we don't, we're still paying on it.
Is that?
Is it paid for that one paid for?
This is.
This is that we were trying to figure that out today and then we got sidetracked sometimes. This is the ladder.
Yeah.
The ladder pumper.
Well, so it's very expensive. We had to have and it hasn't worked.
And.
That's not enough.
Because it's the ladder and the pumper.
The transfer case in what runs the drive, the drive shaft.
Yeah.
And then what pumps the water on top of the ladder.
Yeah.
The selector.
That's, that's all that's broken.
Yeah. Chock.
And the thing is that this is, so it's a forty thousand dollar repair, but it's probably a several hundred thousand dollar truck, right? It's not like you can say, forget it, let's go buy a new one.
No.
It's not scheduled to be replaced until two thousand thirty.
Right. So there's a couple of different options. There's. So one of the options is to. Do, I haven't gotten a quote on the, the option of removing the ability to run the pump and just run the, the drive shaft. So just be able to use the, the truck as a ladder.
Do we have a backup pump?
Is there something that could be used? We have a, we have a pumper. Yeah. I think we have two, one older one and one mini pumper.
But that's not a primary, it's not an engine. It's a ladder.
Yeah.
The.
It's well, it's a dual everything.
Right, right. But I mean.
And the part of that was because of a shrinking volunteer force, I think, was why they wanted to have a truck that.
A one shot deal.
Make it operate with fewer people.
Yeah.
If they had to.
Which they still need.
Which they still need, yeah.
So currently are, if we're in the need of a ladder, we have a mutual aid from Marshall, which they are aware what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
It was that way for. Years, decades it was that way. But Marshall's a long ways away on a cold winter night, Main Street's burning. We've had that issue.
Yes, we have.
So you're gonna.
It's very Marshall took by low gear.
Right, right. So you're gonna look into that a little further, but what are our funding off? Do we have a capital fund for?
We have a replacement of this truck in two thousand thirty.
Right, but we do have a capital fund that's growing.
Yeah, for the fire.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
This year.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah.
Streets.
Oh, perfect. You can come sit right next to me if you want.
Well. So as of six thirty twenty-two, I have a hundred and forty thousand in it. Fire equipment, hundred and forty, and we set aside seventy-five in the current, you know, so there's two fifteen right now. Um, with that one scheduled to be replaced in two thousand thirty.
So is this the kind of thing that you can proceed with repairs now and sort out where that money actually comes from later or you want?
Well, we'd have something like that would need to come out of this capital fire equipment.
Way back in.
So the, well, that's my concern and what with.
Sincerely, because the projection, I mean, assuming our price is correct, the projection that after that purchase, there'd still be hundred and fifty thousand in there. If you look at the schedule, so there's. So right there, it shows there would be a balance even after that purchase.
So if there were forty thousand less, you could still buy the new truck.
But this, this truck is not a four hundred, this wouldn't be. The four hundred thousand, we'd need more.
Yeah.
Tom says about seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Talking, yeah.
Yeah.
Then that's.
We need that trust, right? Yeah, we need that trust. We need to get it back, I think, first of all, then.
I'm gonna figure out how.
I mean, we're, we're not gonna be fully funded thirty anyway, so.
Yeah, but another thing that, I mean, we do have a fairly, I mean, I don't want to lean everything on this, but we do have a fairly robust fund balance. So if we overspent. The fire department line by forty thousand dollars this year at the end, the, the way that happens is it just be.
Right.
Their fund balance at the end. I don't know. And then that keeps all the money in the capital.
Which still isn't enough, right?
Which still.
We take it out of the capital, that's.
It's hard to make it.
How do I make that back up?
So I think we, what we're saying is we want it fixed.
And I'd rather see the money come out of the fund balance than I would be capital fund.
Take it out of that first, right out, we gotta go. Can we do that?
I didn't.
We're gonna take, pay for it out of the fund balance money instead of.
So it over. Fire department.
Oh, yeah, just overspend fire department by forty grand. I don't know, unless there's.
It's a eight to fourteen week repair, so.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Parts.
Parts.
Oh, just waiting for parts. Somebody's not gonna be under the truck for eight weeks, right?
No, parts waiting.
Well, it's twenty-six thousand in parts and thirteen thousand labor and shipping.
Thirteen thousand in labor?
Yeah.
I heard a bearing, things is big.
The whole gearbox is shot.
It's a transfer.
Yeah.
It's on. And it'll come on transmission.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. It's not just a regular transfer case. So you're talking more money.
Yeah.
The labor, soon as you say emergency vehicle, you're, you're looking at more too. And. The mechanics up there, they are from Burlington Public Works. They work on all their stuff up there and they were part time for derogatory, which is where the unit is either representative of E one. So it's, it's pretty reputable.
It's a legit.
Yes.
Get it done.
All right.
Um, do we? We need to motion.
Oh, we do.
I take a motion that we repair the.
And we, I mean, we just found out about this. So to put it on the agenda as a night of my brother, my manager, Jay Port.
So I make a motion and we repair the engine ladder truck with button through.
Oh, just overspending.
Oh, they're spending the fire line budget or whatever. Sweeten that up for me a little, Casey, would you?
Over spending the fire department equipment repair line.
Yeah, right.
About second.
At least get a complete.
Definitely, yeah, we'll do that.
That truck should last the remainder of its term.
Can we push, can we push the term out a little bit?
Cause we might.
I don't know, because that's our next truck in line to meet.
Yeah.
State standards.
Right, now it's one that's gonna be up, that's not.
So hang on, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, Carrie.
Carrie seconded. And any more discussion about funding this large repair? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Can you oppose?
Yep, here comes.
Oh, I said aye.
What was that?
I.
She said aye. Okay, so that's everyone's emotion carries. Thank you.
We'll just assume all her votes are ayes. Just kidding, Kaylee. Okay, these two, last two ones shouldn't take long. So a message from my community development coordinator to future grant application opportunities, looking for an informal nod. Better connections program. This would be used for a designated village center master plan for East Hardwick. NVDA offered assistance in applying for this. The max request is seventy-five thousand, which is really sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars with a ten percent match. And the second one is a downtown transportation grant for additional funding for the pedestrian bridge and the max request is two hundred thousand.
Is the match for the designated village center grant, is that in kind or can, does that have to be cash?
It's cash map.
It's cash.
Yeah.
So we're talking about seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. No. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. And this is one of the reasons why I wanted to put in the budget I had East Hardwick Village. And this is like a, you know.
Instead of sidewalks only.
We do a East Hardwick Village.
Improvement.
Improvements or because they are designated village center and this would be the match for something, something along these lines.
So what is a designated village center master plan?
It's basically the first step in, it's, it's like a mini town plan, but it's the first step in the line of being able to get funding for future projects. So it's kind of a requirement.
We hear this a lot.
Okay.
Okay, really quick question. Can we use? As a match, so this would include, I would imagine this would include the East Hardwick Bridge, which is going to be an expensive project. Can we include some of the capital as the match for that, since we have some built up, including the line that you were just talking about?
I, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I guess we'd have to have a further discussion about that. We are also looking for grant opportunities for the replacement of, or for the repair and refurbishment of that bridge. So we're just kind of starting to get a plan together for, to utilize the village center designation to be able to get some of these projects going. I'd like Tracy's got her hand up, so. Unmute. There you go.
Right. I was just gonna say that the max amount, we, we don't actually know that we would go for the maximum amount. We don't really know. I'm gonna be meeting with Annie from NVDA next week to talk about what it might cost to get a master plan. In East Hardwick has had a lot of different pieces already done of a plan. And so the concept is that that would bring these things together, the motion plan, the trailhead plan for LDRT, the sidewalk audit. A lot of the work that's already happening at the Grange and River House, that kind of thing, and bring businesses into the conversation to create a little plan. One of the other. Another impetus for doing this is that designated village centers that have gone through the better connections grant program, then become eligible for downtown transportation fund money. Downtown transportation funds can only be used in designated downtowns. We're gonna be one soon, I think, but also in designated village centers that have gone through the better connections grant. So that's another motivation.
Hey, go ahead.
So that line us up. I am just trying to figure out how this helps in some direct way. So, so you're saying that the. So the East Hardwick Village is a designated.
Village.
Better.
Yeah.
And if we did this designated village center master plan, then that designated village center could get. Downtown transportation funds, those could potentially help with sidewalks and bridges?
Yes. Exactly.
Okay, I got it. So this helps us access more grant funding. I think we should do it.
Exactly. The plant, just for the, for the, yeah, the planning commission is also, if the select word supports it, the planning commission has also said that they will, they definitely support this project.
So but first, before anything, so Tracy, you're gonna have a conversation with someone at NVDA about how much money we'd actually be asking for. It would likely be less than the maximum, you think?
I'm guessing. We're meeting on Wednesday, so I'll know more after that.
Yeah.
All right.
So basically, when I bring something like this up in the manager's report.
Yeah.
I don't want to get into the same position we got in a couple, like two months ago, where you guys said no, and we showed up with a resolution.
Where she'd already spent a lot of time.
Where she already spent a lot of time. And her time is limited, so I want to maximize that.
Yep.
It's a good point.
I think it's a good, I think.
This is when I need to say no.
Yeah, if you want to say no, you can say no.
I'm saying no.
You're saying no.
I don't know. I just get discouraged. All we do is plan. All we do is pay to plan, pay to plan, pay to plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
We should execute once in a while.
Yeah.
Execute, you mean start projects?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just. Fair, right?
I mean, I've been hearing this, we need.
So many of these.
We need this down.
It's, it's like. But it's like. Come out of it. It's like a flow chart. It's like a flow chart.
Other things possible.
That's.
Still, the reason why I have banners, because I wrote grants for community foundation. It does ask us to have all that.
See it. I don't see any of it.
Well, it's.
When to see.
So we got some new sidewalks out here. We can, it's like, we can, we can go around and like.
Fifty thousand dollars downtown.
I know, I know. There's, there's improved, it's hard to see improvement.
It's not. I can lead you around town and show you a whole bunch of stuff that needs to be improved without any plan.
No, I know that. But what I'm saying is that, that the downtown project here, that took years of planning before they executed that.
I know about planners.
Yeah.
Our sewer project is.
Yeah, we're doing that.
We just did. There's a plan. There's an engineer.
Right. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We. We are not going to be able to afford to fix that bridge without some money from the state. So whatever, if this helps with that, let's do it.
Yeah, there's other money too, I think, for the bridge probably, but.
We're working on.
Right.
Structures grant through B Trans.
Yeah, which is great. I'm thinking things like the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Are gonna be expensive, but not bridge expensive.
Yeah.
Maybe. Maybe.
I mean, we also have like, for example, I, I had, I had to call Norman Gravel today to find out if he was doing the sidewalks this year. He donates a lot of his time to do that.
Yes.
And like, for example, if he couldn't do that. There's, like, we need to have a plan in place for the village of East Hardwick. And I don't mean a written plan, just a plan to operate that end of town. Cause we're not gonna send our road crew up there to do the sidewalks. So it's like just that little piece, you know, we want to have a.
We're about to sidewalk back though.
We could do that too. We should hire a consultant to plan it.
Come on, let's go.
All right. Yeah.
We don't follow.
Can she?
All right.
Here.
No microphone.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, just, just a couple of things, Danny. I don't know if this helps at all, but the, the. Better connections program is very adamant that they are not interested in producing plans that are gonna sit on a shelf. And although it's called a master plan, they really call it like an action plan. They want to see concrete steps that you are going to tackle one at a time. And they, they, they want it to. To move toward actual projects. So that, I like that attitude. I, I will also say that just because we're planning this simultaneously, we can also be doing some things that we've already decided our priorities. But just like the getting, getting East Hardwick designated as a designated village center, which took some time, then allowed us to be eligible for this better connections grant. We do this, then that allows us, that allows East Hardwick to in future be eligible for the downtown transportation fund, which could be helpful in a lot of things that, that are gonna be needed in East Hardwick. So it's just a sort of building. It's a step in a process that yes, it is dictated by the state, but it also gives us the potential for getting money from the state, which we couldn't otherwise get. So. I, I don't think we have to stop taking action because we're planning. I think we can, you know, continue to move forward on some other things we know need to be done. So anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I think what I'm hearing is that you're gonna get, you're gonna get four nods and one shake of the head. Right? Okay.
Think so.
Okay.
That's what we're thinking at this point. But if she comes back and she says, actually, it's a lot smaller and Danny, this is what we're gonna do, you might change your mind.
That's not, it's not about this, the whole.
No, it's the whole, the way that all this stuff works.
That's, that's. That's the nature of the beast. It's the nature of the beast.
It's frustrating.
I don't agree with a lot of things.
Doesn't need to work.
Right.
Funds rose every day without village and downtown designation. So.
Right.
Let's just move on.
Yeah, okay, we're moving on. What about the next one, which is?
The downtown transportation grant for additional funding for the pedestrian bridge.
That's a way to do that.
So the trouble, okay, so.
So the six hundred and twenty thousand we have is not gonna be enough.
Right.
Nope. It's not gonna be enough.
Well, I think it's gonna be close, but it's not gonna be enough.
It's not gonna be enough.
But if we had this two hundred.
Yeah.
Then we'd be.
Be a lot closer.
Be a lot better. And then.
And the two hundred is available to us as a designated downtown, just saying.
Because it's through.
Because it's part of those funds that are available only to designated.
As any village centers who have created a master.
Yes, that too. You nailed it.
It would have been a lot simpler to do that than.
Okay.
Start.
So, yeah.
Well, they're back.
So my favorite municipal planning consultant has offered to maybe help us with this. So this wouldn't be something Tracy would do, but she would work with. Heather Carrington. To do. If you guys, the informal not, this is just the informal nod.
So I'd like, I'd like to see that, cause having, I, I think that our bridge is gonna cost, we're gonna need that two hundred thousand.
Yes.
This is not getting money to plan. This is getting money to build.
Okay. Next time, I'm gonna, you know, John Dewey told me, he's like, keep your manager's report short.
Don't have anything.
Yeah, I'm just gonna do it.
So we're nodding at the second one too.
Okay, perfect.
Are we?
Yes. Okay, good.
Two, two.
All right. And then the last one is the bridge meeting with SE group to discuss custom features for the bridge, i.e. lighting, width, decking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. SE group will provide us with a spreadsheet to finalize those decisions, which will move us closer to be able to order any bridge.
Lights.
That project is moving forward.
Yeah.
Good job. Yeah, so that'll be at our next meeting, we'll have.
Um, hopefully.
We'll be presenting.
They're gonna provide, I think I got it at the end of the day today in my email.
Yeah.
I'll distribute it and we'll move forward.
They have to make decisions.
Yeah.
Well, is it?
That'll be fun.
I'm gonna give the teaser, which is that we're, we're leaning, we're definitely leaning towards the bridge that.
Option one.
Which was the one most people selected.
Yep.
And it's the simplest one.
I still have been found it. And that's a website.
It's, we took it down.
And we're.
It'll come up, the website, if it's still on there.
Yeah.
I don't think it is.
So we'll have some images, but I think that. Two important points, the, the budget is looking higher than it's looking closer to eight or nine hundred thousand or something like that. Yeah. And that, because we have to replace both abutments and yeah, and then.
I think that is a very.
I think we could, if that's, that's a high.
Yeah.
I hope that's a very conservative.
As Adam would say, it's a high level estimate.
And then, but the other thing I want to say is that we're pushing ours. I think we all, we all have our eyes on getting that done next year. And that's gonna take a little bit of pushing some folks and that's what we're.
Maybe maybe another public meeting in.
Yeah.
And we're.
January.
We could discuss it at.
Have the ability to be pushing people.
Maybe.
Well.
I would too late. If we.
All right.
Sure.
Sorry. Anything else?
I'm done.
You were gonna say that the road crew is getting ready for a storm tomorrow.
Yep.
And you're gonna say the police department is.
They're in the process of an investigation right now.
Oh, they are.
And it's going well.
Need even the.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, thank you, that's what I got.
Great.
I even got a movie, and I won't play that.
All right, good. Next up is, uh, hey, we're right back on schedule, sixteen. Next up is the Heartwood Electric Department Report, we have Nat Smith. Who's joined us to finally bring us up to date on the. Electric Department.
Yeah, a couple of ways, so. Our most recent financial show that we're one point two percent under budget on revenues. Five and a half percent over budget on expenses for the year. Given by purchase power costs in the first quarter this year, for about thirteen percent over budget. Obviously, global debt, global, nat, natural gas market. The problem, the delinquent regional power sources are highly dependent upon natural gas. Both in the case of supply chain problems are well known by everybody. For example, transformers, it started to have eight to twelve week need time for delivery. Presently, according to forty-four weeks. Prices have doubled in the last two years. So it's been thirteen years since our last rate increase, as you know, we're filing for a new one. That rate increase, we think will be, uh, request, we finalize the next few days. The expected increase of upwards of fourteen percent. By now, residents pay. Six percent per kilowatt hour for the first hundred, and then after that, almost eighteen cents. So per kilowatt hour, so that will go up from seventeen point nine to about twenty, twenty and a half. Unfortunately. We think it's appropriate and necessary. Our walk-in hydro has generated two point six megawatt hours this year so far. And the H eleven solar field about two point two megawatt hours. The two of them represent, we own about sixteen percent of our total customer need. So follow up from November meeting with you all. The board of commissioners is in the middle of evaluating an investment in well over one million dollars, five million and a half. Into a automated metering infrastructure project, I think is terrible. The business model for the project does not have a very intensive payback period of this investment, they set seven years on each account, ten or even more. But this regulatory pressure will be staying, will eventually make it required, we have automated meters, stop, meters, and the guy comes down the reeds. It will help, and help us. But, and is grant money available now to cover about half these spends? So do we take that, or do we take our say no and take, take our chances down the road? We're also evaluating a stored energy project, we built next to the H eleven solar, a building throw. That would be a four plus megawatt battery utilized to reduce our peak demands. As well as for next to generate revenues in the future for new technologies. Any questions?
How, how big would that battery be? No, but inside, physically.
It's a, it, I think they're the, on the order of shipping containers.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I ju, I looked the last.
A shipping container?
Yeah, I, I would've said less, but yeah.
Okay, I just, the last meeting, the last meeting we had. Um, Vince brought that up, and I Googled batteries and, uh. Like, big ba, battery banks, and I think, um, there was one like the size of a, uh, like a. A big warehouse, it was the largest battery.
Wow.
And as, let's go big, we're gonna put a battery in, let's put a big battery in.
Four megawatts, I think, this is just.
Peak shaving.
Buy on the market, we could use and stuff, and sort of.
Right, yeah. I think it's a great idea.
I read a little, so it's a pretty sophisticated system, right, too, cause then, aren't you trying to anticipate when the peaks are gonna be? Right, I think.
But the smart metering would help.
Peak shaving, I don't believe a word, but.
Even smart meters either, so.
I'm glad you're where you are.
Uh, you can have different rate structures for different times of day.
Yeah.
For our little.
And you can.
And you can probably predict the peaks a little better.
And you can offer electricity at two o'clock in the morning, if you wanted to hook up your, making sure of that.
Or charge your electric car. Alright, so, um. Uh, I under, yeah, did you do? I understand why you're, you're over budget on your expenses. Um, one point two percent under on revenues, is that, I mean, that's one point two percent is pretty close to where. There's other non-issues that.
Weather being more.
Oh, yeah. Alright. Alright, any other questions for Nat while he's here?
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for coming. Alright, next up, item one, select word to discuss time and location of the twenty twenty-three town meeting, Sherry Cornish.
Let's do it on Tuesday.
Tanya's here.
Do the first Tuesday? Alright, first Tuesday in March, we're gonna do it.
That's townhouse.
What?
Clearly not in it for the long run.
Actually, I won't be here either.
So, so can somebody check with the town clerk?
Yes.
She's on.
She.
Where is she?
There.
Hi, Tanya.
Hi, so for, if you do it at townhouse, um, we can't do voting there, cause your stage isn't ADA compliance yet, is it?
No, not yet.
And that's where we'd have to do the voting, so we'd have to do two separate locations if you choose to do your meeting there.
So how do it used to work, is, we used to have.
Voted in front.
Yeah.
And so we could, we could look at changing the way that the, uh, seating is, for the voting, so we can. Turn it around or something, I think we can probably figure out how people could be in, I mean, at the school, it's all in the same room, it's just. But.
The lighting is a little tricky in the, the townhouse, for people that can't see that well.
We had lights.
I know, I know, it's just, that was one of the complaints.
Is the school still in?
I'm just.
The school's already given us approval if we want to do it there.
The elementary school.
They.
They've said what?
She said.
Oh, well, then do it one more year there, I don't care.
So we'll do it in townhouse, build next year, well.
So what do we gotta reason, yeah.
It doesn't, it needs to, when the time the town report goes out, it needs to say where people are gonna be.
Yes, and I. I'm just living quiet.
You're gonna be away.
No, I wanna be here.
I think that we could figure out how to. Like we used to have a mouse or.
I think it would be really cool, we haven't had an in-person town meeting since COVID. And, um, at least in the three years I've been on the board, this has been punted every time Sherry's brought it up, if not before then. I think if we can address the ADA issue, something like lighting is pretty easy to figure out, and that we should do it. Let's, let's go with the townhouse.
Can we have people in the balcony?
No.
Cause we used to have a lot of people in the balcony during town meeting.
We used to have a lot of people at town meeting.
Yeah, so you know what, one thing we have had the last couple of town meetings I've been to at the gymnasium, was a lot of kids.
Yeah.
A lot more kids, and I remember we traditionally used to have a town meeting, traditionally town meeting in the old days, there weren't any kids there.
There's also a kitchen there.
I'm just saying that.
There's also a kitchen at the high school, or the elementary school.
So I don't know, that's just kind of the, um, that was just a statement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I will go where everybody else wants to go.
Norma, can you state your name, please?
And I'm just curious, sort of, but. Um, I really think. The, the elementary schools are not comfortable. I've been to vote, it's just easier to just go into the vote, listen to what's going on. There's more room. Just saying, it's your decision, but that's what I think.
Thank you.
I mean, from the space standpoint, and accessibility, where you can park, how close you can park. Like you can back up back.
Right, in the school, yeah. I used to like, when we had the townhouse, I felt like I could hear better, and that, um, it was a. More like a group discussion, because I don't know why, I guess I could hear.
And the parking will be all clear, because it's a trailhead.
Yeah.
And.
I'm not saying, no, I just.
We're just talking through.
Yeah. I. I, I.
I like to feel at the townhouse.
Yeah, sure, we have ADA, so if we can't fix that between now and then, it's definitely.
Well, townhouse, the first floor is ADA, it's just that we used to, before, we haven't done the thing with the stage yet. So we can't have voting on the stage, which is the ultimate plan, to get back to.
Could you not have a voting booth on the floor for ADA?
Yeah.
You'll have it back behind partition or something, so that, that. You know, it's ADA complacent, so you've got an ADA voting booth, and then you've got the rest of them up on the stage. Up and down the stairs, I think it's kinda hard.
Yeah.
But. It can also just be where they were before.
Down from.
Yeah.
Sorry, are you gonna have it at ten o'clock, same as it has been in the past?
Yeah.
I don't know, is there a reason to do it?
No, I'm just wondering, and then, um, Tanya, how late are the polls open, they're gonna be open like nine to seven, or will they be ten to seven?
Um, we'll do nine to seven, and then it'll all be hand counting, so we'll have to hand count off, so. So it would probably be there till nine-ish. But voting, voting would be nine to seven.
In the last couple of years, the school district has had their meeting. Either right before, right after town meeting, do we know where they're planning to meet?
Um, I talked, I, he was emailing with Taylor at OSSU today, and she is gonna check on that to see if they're doing their meeting. Or if they're gonna have it on their ballot again this year, like they did the last two years. They're not sure yet.
So I don't know, I'm, I'm mixed, I feel I like the townhouse, I'd like the feel, I like the, the discussion there. But on the other hand, I see the practicalities of the school with the parking and the, the kitchen and the, you know. There's more space, so.
One more year at the school.
And the new townhouse, when we have ADA.
Yeah.
Cause that leaves more room for the meeting with the ballots, and, okay. Is there, will it? Open for people again?
Yeah, when we have our addition, that is a fire escape, we know we have fire escapes on the building.
So that's the issue.
Right.
I remember that, and that's great, but, okay, okay.
Those stairs are no longer rotting the sides of the.
Yeah, yeah, which is great, okay, so.
Another project that we.
Need to be something designated, yeah. So I say, we do that, but Sherry, get it in writing, cause you can't trust these people, and we say that every year.
We'll do it next year. Cause we, yeah, cause we keep saying that.
Well, it'll depend on if it's like ADA compliant, but it will be at that point, though, should be.
What's the seating capacity, do you know, off the top of your head?
A hundred and forty downstairs.
Which is all we would have. This year.
Which is more than we was.
Is it more than the attendance at town meeting? Really?
Well, we haven't had town meeting.
That's true.
But I remember one time in, in there, it was full, it was great.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That was then.
Right, yeah.
Close together.
Yeah, we were fighting about something.
There was a bunch of people standing in the back, it was great.
Yeah, yeah, but we, there was a big argument that year, that was the South Tower, garbage dump or something.
No.
There was something going on, cause I remember.
What was it? Something good.
Let's keep moving, so.
Yeah, we got a lo, we got a long agenda ahead of us.
Alright. Let's roll, so. What's the will of the, where we, I guess we don't actually have to decide, but it would be good to.
Here, and then townhouse next year.
Okay.
Make a motion, we have town meeting at the school this year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We don't, we, we need to approve the warning at some point, and I'll say where it is. And that's coming up later. Okay, we're moving on, next. Uh, item, item two, select word, discuss and improve the memorandum of understanding with the Hardwood Downtown Partnership.
Good evening all, uh, sorry to join you by Zoom, but I wasn't sure what was gonna happen with the storm. Um, again, I'm Heather Carrington, I'm the consultant who's been putting together the downtown designation for you, and I'm happy to tell you, this is the last time you will be considering things for me on this project. And the entire application should be, uh, submitted, I would think, the last week of December. But I've been submitting large swaths of it to the Vermont Downtown Program Coordinator for him to review it and give me comments if he wants anything changed before I submit the final thing. So we are well on our way, um, I've given you a memo with the two agenda items you have before you tonight. The first one being the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Hardwick and the Hardwick Downtown Partnership. And what this does is it memorializes that you have made a financial contribution to the downtown organization. And that's one of the requirements for the application, this is not a new financial, um, commitment. This is money that you've already allocated, you allocated previously through the ARPA funds, ten thousand dollars for downtown, uh, recovery. And so those funds have been divided into two tranches, five thousand dollars for FY twenty-three, five thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. Um, so this just basically demonstrates that you have skin in the game with the organization and have made a financial commitment. Um, in terms of. The roles and responsibilities, I received a bunch of questions, um, and I believe you have all been CC'd on my responses to those questions. Primarily, it's been about whether you have been making, um, you're making more of a financial commitment, and you are not making more of a financial commitment. This MOU is to cover FY twenty-three and twenty-four, and my recommendation is that in future, what you do is annually renew the MOU. And that gives flexibility to, uh, make a contribution, not make a contribution, shift staffing models, whatever it is that you need to do. But overall, what this is, is, um, your guarantee of what services you will get in exchange for the funding that you have provided to the Downtown Partnership. Um, I do wanna clarify one thing, because this was raised as a question, and, and wasn't clearly understood before. Um, what I'm proposing and how this is envisioned is a shared staffing model between the town and the downtown organization. So it would be a ten hour a week executive director that we're talking about, so overall, the entire budget, I, at present, and it's not yet approved. Um, and we'll be going through the downtown board for that, because they're the ones who are fiscally responsible for the funding. Um, but it would be a ten hour position, and I think probably about a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar a year budget. Um, it's useful to know that the down, the Vermont Downtown Coalition is taking to the legislative session this year. A proposal that twenty thousand dollars go to each designated downtown for operations. So that would take care of almost the entire budget, if that is in fact passed, and it looks likely at present, but that's just a guess on my part. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have about the document before you, and I'm happy to make changes if you would prefer to see it again.
I think it looks good.
Yeah, everything question.
I asked all my questions, Heather, and, and I got very satisfactory answers, thank you.
Thank you very much for asking in advance, I appreciate those.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Yeah, it was helpful for me, too. Uh, so. Backing up, where are we, we have to, uh, we wanna do, is engage, what do we wanna do? Approve the memorandum of understanding?
Do I have to abstain?
But you're on the board.
Yeah.
Probably.
And I'm signing this memorandum as a board.
Oh, look at that. Uh, so yes, well, you don't have to, because Vermont's very squishy about glass, but it's probably the good thing. Yes.
Motion to sign or motion to approve.
I think it says approve.
To approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Hardwick and the Hardwick Downtown Partnership.
And have our town manager sign.
And, uh, our manager represents the town.
And you're setting. Any more discussion about the MOU? Haley, you good? All in favor? Bye. Uh, in favor of uh approving the MOU, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
Oh, you're abstaining?
Aye.
And a aye. So that's every, uh, so four ayes and abstention. Um, and next is to discuss and approve the resolution to allocate a portion of the town water wastewater reserves to the downtown revitalization. So part of the plan is to do within that downtown area to do infill and um.
Future.
Future development. So outline.
Are those numbers?
I have.
We didn't, what we got didn't have.
I have. I worked. It was. Uh, joint effort by our um town clerk and myself today, mainly the town clerk. Um, but we came up with nineteen percent of the total um reserve, current reserve. And that equates to forty six thousand three hundred and seventy five gallons a day. So that's what. Would be written in those in that.
Well.
Resolution.
Right, but it's actually calling up thirty to forty new housing units.
Hmm, we took that into consideration.
Ten to twelve thousands. This one makes me nervous.
Allocating a certain percentage of our water, wastewater.
Part of the downtown, which is pretty limited in space.
Why don't you let Heather speak to that? Um.
Yeah, I. The projections, if if you don't mind, um, the projections are based on existing properties. Um, you know, again, they're just projections, but the number of the allocation isn't up to number. So that's a maximum number. That's not that you're saying that you would commit nineteen, you know, nineteen percent, as Opie was saying of the uncommitted waste water. It's that you would commit up to that, no more than is what you're saying there.
And the designated downtown boundaries are larger than the current village center boundaries in our application.
So. And the, how do they relate to the enterprise zone boundaries?
Uh, geez, what? That's players.
Define enterprise zone, like the industrial park?
The, the water and wastewater is an enterprise zone that that it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It's, I would say it's less.
Pay for it.
It's less than twenty five percent. The designated village center uh proposed boundaries is less than a quarter of of what the water and wastewater serves.
Okay, so this number is roughly in alignment with what with the geographic territory we're talking about.
It's more in line with the current uses.
Yeah.
And future planned uses. Um, based on what's available for space.
Okay.
With the additional housing units.
Mm hmm.
And property available for development.
Okay. Yeah.
So do you want, when I was in your office earlier, you had a total of the current usage for that district that?
Our current usage for that is with a a little, with a little bit of a fluff factor is twenty one thousand gallons a day.
And so what you're proposing is we lock up to about twice that.
Twice that, forty six thousand three hundred and seventy five gallons a day.
And the point of this um resolution is because we wanna demonstrate to somebody that we have capacity to make the growth that's to to support the growth that's projected.
That's correct. It's required as part of the application to demonstrate that we are um already prepared to provide what it is that we would need for a downtown designation. And keep in mind that I have estimated these projects. Um, but I estimated really based on available parcels based on an expectation that certain projects would go like the Blue Donkey Project, the bank rehabilitation, um, occupation of previously vacant spaces, um, like windshield world, for example. Um, so it's based on um real on the ground circumstances. And if you do decide to approve this, I would recommend that you strike the um under uh the resolution itself, number one, the select word hereby dedicates up to nineteen percent of the uncommitted waste rider reserve and then strike the of X gallons. And just say providing an allocation of approximately forty six thousand three hundred and seventy five gallons per day. And the same with number two as well.
Yeah, okay. So do we wanna?
If we don't renew this MOU in eighteen months, does this commitment go away as well?
You could, you could put in with the resolution um that you will reevaluate the percentage. We could add a line where you will reevaluate it on an annual basis. So it wouldn't go away. This is a resolution of the select board and has nothing to do with the downtown organization per se. Um, it's about the downtown designation itself. So I would, I would add a line. You might wanna add language that this will be reconsidered on an annual basis, which allows you some flexibility.
That feels better.
Oh, sounds like lining up more work is every year we. I mean, if we really wanted.
Well, it's something, I, it's something that John started. It's something that the state used to keep track of. And they stopped.
Oh.
And then John started again. And didn't, and you know, he kept it going, but it's not.
To try to know whether we'd have capacity.
To try to predict this stuff.
Approaches, approach the town to.
Right.
Open here. We have to know whether or not they can do what they wanna do. So.
So it's important to have a running, I mean, this. This. I learned a lot.
That's the reason why they.
Yeah.
Want.
How confident are we in our uh estimate of our uh of our uncommitted reserve? Because we have, don't we have businesses in the industrial part that have like percentage allocations or?
Yes. We do.
They're not in the downtown.
And they're.
Those aren't uncommitted. Those are already committed.
Yeah, those are, those are flowed like. We're, we're already capturing that. Some of it we're not because it's high strength waste and that's a whole different conversation.
Yeah.
But.
I guess what I'm wondering is if we, if you try to figure out our uncommitted amount based on our current flows. Is that accurate? Because some people in the industrial part might have already an existing commitment to a certain amount of the wastewater, but they might not be outputting that. Or, you know what I mean?
Right.
So it might be committed even though it's not being used.
Mm hmm.
We're going to partner if somebody comes in there that needs a big.
I don't think we have any of that situation, close situation.
You don't say that. Okay. I also kind of think it's a low risk thing to do this because um if, when I look at the, the list of proposed developments in the downtown area and think about just if we didn't do this. And somebody came to us and said, we're opening a restaurant at the Blue, we're opening the Blue Donkey and Richard Broshue's old service station. Are you guys okay?
Which they just got approved for.
Right, so we're gonna probably approve that. If somebody comes in and says, oh, there's this empty lot and we wanna build this duplex and it's um, you know. And we need a sewer hookup. We're probably gonna say, do we have capacity? If so, yes, go ahead.
So this is interesting. Yes, today has a meeting in the uh ACCD. You know, whether it's. Oh, we're talking about, so that's basically what he says. We need to start building more in our villages. We need to start building four story, five story.
Right.
Residential buildings. In those areas.
So that people can live in those areas.
Because that's what the infrastructure.
Yes, yeah.
Ahead of those versus, you know, if you don't want five acre lots all over the cooking side, the alternative is is to build back in the designing buildings and stuff, so. You know, that capacity, that's why the topic for this, obviously.
Right.
That didn't sound like a lot, me.
Now.
And it doesn't sound like it's gonna put us on the hook to have to say no to anyone else if that.
Right.
As a fair, right. Sounds like we have the flexibility if it was. Find this out to figure out a way to change.
I agree.
Give it back. We're really unsure what our capacity really is.
Right.
You know, we got an idea, but not.
I, I was. Can I make a motion to approve the resolution with the changes that Heather recommended?
You pitch.
And, and so that you wanna approve the resolution, striking the two um reserve of X number of gallons and numbers one and two. And uh percentage is gonna be inserted as nineteen percent.
Nineteen percent.
And uh providing approximate uh allocation of.
Forty six thousand three hundred and seventy five gallons a day.
A day.
Is that for both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's your motion, Haley?
Correct.
I thought so.
Oh, second.
Would you like to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but would you like to add that you will uh resolve to review and renew the allocation annually?
No, it sounds like work.
No.
Okay.
Review or D D, that's right.
We'll review when we have problem.
Yeah.
And not before.
Fix it if it's not broke.
Uh, be something other board.
Right, okay, more discussion on this resolution about the water wastewater capacity. Is there, okay, all in favor of approving the resolution as stated, please say aye.
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 Wait, Sherry abstained?
Should I abstain from that one too?
Yeah, no. Okay, you're saying, all right, everybody, so unanimous ayes. Thank you, everyone. So the motion carries. And um. I'm gonna read that in. And that's. And thank you for uh coming to uh explain everything to us.
Yeah, anytime. So I'll make the revisions um and then send it uh to staff to have you sign.
Great. Sounds good.
Right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Heather.
That's good.
All right, next up is item three, select word discuss and approve the resolution. Oh, no, we just did that. Item four. Thank you. Select word to approve a request of uh variance to tie into this town's uh collection system. This is the wastewater collection system.
Correct.
Uh, so here we are back at water and wastewater. You passed it when you were young.
Yeah. I know. Well, I don't, I couldn't, they told me I have to hook up to water and sewer, but here it says I don't.
Cause you're more than three hundred feet.
Yeah. They may be.
They did.
They were just fun.
No, they, it wasn't fun at all.
Can you throw that down?
It's not really that fun. It's not the hooking up or it's having to pay every month.
Uh, Opie, can you uh?
Yeah.
Give us an intro on this uh? Oh, are we Zoom? We're having Zoom issues again?
No, we're just gonna throw the email up.
The email.
That from Patrick Larson.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can say it would be cheaper.
Um, right.
Everybody don't.
Did you read the email? Okay, so um.
I believe. Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves and explain your project and or do you want me to do it?
Yeah, I mean, I can.
Okay.
My daughter, my husband Scott, we just purchased land off the Moyle Ave that was originally molar path. Molar. And and sold Lorelei Harris. We thought, man, we're planning near eight acres. We're planning to go a hundred acres. There.
So the sewer main goes down the Moyle Avenue.
Okay.
And there's a right of way. Do, is that a right of way or is that?
After going through the whole process, it according to the deeds for the lot that's existing there, which is family, um. They own from the Moyle Ave into their property and we have a right of way, twenty five foot right of way. Originally, and then it go after about a hundred feet, it goes to forty five foot right of way, the full length of this property for maintenance, utilities and access to the rest of the property.
Okay, so.
So we have a right of way from there. We do not own from the Moyle Ave. Into our.
So there is a a deeded area that utilities could be placed in the ground. Okay. Um, do you know exactly where your house site is gonna be? Have you identified?
Be up in the sand.
Okay, so that's the two, two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet away. Okay.
Well. More than three hundred feet. It's three hundred feet to nowhere.
No, where their house is, the corner of the.
Of the house will be, it's just under three hundred.
To the main.
Oh, all the way to the main.
Sure. So I think I.
But our personal judgment, I thought, and I have the ordinance here. We don't have any street alley or right of way that has a sewer main on it. Which according to the ordinance.
Right, you have the, you have needed access to it, though. You have, yeah, that's, that, that could be argued. And just for, yeah, I agree with you, but it could also be argued for the sake of the ordinance. I'm not trying to take sides. I'm just wanna provide all the facts.
Well, it does say uh that situated on a parcel abutting any street alley or right of way, but you have a right in which, oh, in which there's a public sewer main. Got it.
Yeah.
Right. And not right of way, because you have a main.
Oh, sewer main. But your parcel, if you, yeah, depends on whether you include the right of way as part of the parcel, I guess, in that definition, right?
But if you did, then why would it be right where?
Okay.
Because, well, I guess because you could, because you could also have a sewer main running up right of way, I guess.
Right.
Cause we have rights away with sewer mains, like the town has rights away with sewer mains, places that are not streets or. So you could be close to one of those and not a street.
Right, it could, but right of way that has a sewer main.
Right. Yeah. Like we have one that goes down along.
Right.
Right. So um, so my questions are, so you guys are are looking for a um variance from the ordinance to not have to put in, not have to connect parts who are right.
Correct.
Water also.
No, they.
Water. I mean, the lot ordinance doesn't give you an option not to.
Oh.
Here in the village on us.
We're in the village, yes.
Yeah, yeah. This one gives you an option not to if it's.
With those.
But you're within three hundred feet. And. Blah, 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 blah. We can waive it if there's severe construction limitations or excessive cost or unusual lock characteristics. According to our ordinance.
What does unusual lock carry?
That would be like if, if you would have to pump it, like if the elevation and you'd have to put a lift station in.
Yeah, or ledge that you couldn't dig through.
Right.
The sewer has to go downhill. Water can go everywhere.
Mm hmm.
Cause it's under pressure.
Talks about each field and.
So, so that, that would be, I would consider that email evidence of a perk test.
Yeah.
And Patrick's a licensed designer.
Mm hmm.
A state certified licensed designer. So that's part of the ordinance is evidence of a successful perk test. I would consider that evidence of a successful perk test.
Got it.
But is that, just so I understand, is that also evidence that it's so? So yes, they can, they can do it, but is that what you were just asking, Eric, in terms of our ordinance?
Yeah, I was just going down the road of um. Yeah, just looking at our, reading through our ordinance, it, it sounds to me, and I, I understand that this is like open for debate, but it sounds to me that it's a parcel uh where there's a proposed house that's the footprint is gonna be within three hundred feet of a sewer main in the village. So if you argue that it's not abutting the sewer, sewer main, that's one thing, but if you say, accept that it is, then the select board could waive the requirement either A, because of severe construction limitations or excessive cost, or B, unusual lock characteristics. Which, as Opie pointed out, would be like elevation things typically probably.
Either of those things exist.
It doesn't seem like either of those things are the case, just. Um. Cause. So. All right, so you guys are here. What's your appeal to us? Like, why, why should we, uh, why, why should we say, yeah, okay, do a, do your own private subject instead of hooking up to our municipal sewers?
Well, one, one of them, well, is, it's for the down system in itself, cause it's a sand bed.
Yeah.
It's gonna save us money, obviously, and we're right at the edge of the three hundred foot.
Okay, so it could be more than three hundred feet?
I tried to find the house back, it'd be, you know, over one, three hundred feet. Really, really close, and we had a lot to relax, department the other day too, and, you know, and he's like, yeah, you're, you know, you're about two fifty to three hundred somewhere in there.
So my concern.
You know, my thing too is I don't, you know, the way I read number twelve, we, you know, we have bought a right of way, but that right of way doesn't have, I mean, that's where I think.
But that is your, that is your property, that's what.
It's a utility easement.
Yeah.
To.
That's your connection.
To the main street, that, I think, I mean, like, like I said, I'm not taking sides, but that could be argued that that is access to the sewer main. It's not like you have to get an easement from another property owner to access the sewer, you have a, a utility right of way.
Have you, have you saw a state wastewater permit?
That's what Patrick is doing, police, so once we get whether we can put in our own or we have to talk, then he'll do the design and.
So, yeah, so I, you know, I don't know what I should do, because I just, I had the one they told me no, so.
Well, I mean, just to get.
I have four lots.
Just to give you a, like, I'll give you a, the point blank answer, like, we're in the business to collect wastewater to increase our revenues, to be able to pay for the wastewater plant, I think you understand that. So for us to, well, for the town to say, to grant somebody permission to not be on our we're, we're kinda letting the money go down another drain. So.
Right.
Just like, that's, that's how I look at it, but I, I see both sides.
Right, and the flip side of that is we've also talked about people that our, our water system goes beyond our sewer system, so if we have people that are wanting village water and then they decide they want to build a sewer in McCall, for example, then we're gonna be on the upper part of that infrastructure. So.
It's, it's a tough one.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, where, I think about it more in terms of so whether you guys hook up or don't hook up doesn't really have any appreciable impact on our system or funding or anything.
But result.
It's the precedent.
Cause I've got four more lots, I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna go on to. But I was right at three hundred feet. Two eighty nine or something like that.
I mean, it wasn't a question.
It was not a, did not know option.
You're part of that same sand vein too, right?
Yeah, absolutely, same saying, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, part of Patrick doesn't get any better.
No, no, it's good saying, so I live over on McCall Road, it's just on the other side of the hill, so, and I totally understand. Move your house so we don't have to argue. So I would take a tape measure throughout. I, I mean, I, that's three hundred, I'm all good with doing it, but if it's two ninety or not, you know what I mean? Because the next. Center of foundation or.
Uh, it says the edge of the foundation. Any edge.
Any part of the foundation.
That's your right of way, you're right, so I don't know where it's.
When you're right of way.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, it has to follow your right of where.
It's gonna go. Basically.
That's right, that's, that's what the distance is from, from the main to your house. And because that's what I did, I went right up over the hill, and I even had to put a little, you know, to get over a grade, cause that's much grade, and it still was. And that's what put me over, if I could have went straight up the hill, it would have been under three hundred, but I couldn't because it was too steep.
But your house was already there and you couldn't move it.
Was it a new house? No, this is a new house.
Eric, do we need to, do we need to make a motion for this, or is it just a come?
We're, we're not, we're, we're, well, unless, I mean.
You can table the.
Somebody wants to make a motion.
I mean, if you want, are you feeling you want, you wanna move that we?
I, what, what, what it sounds like from the board and what my understanding of the ordinance is, is that this does not, this would not fit currently as an exception to the ordinance, that's what I'm hearing, is that according to, um, like, if, it's what it sounds like, is if the building was farther away, then yes, it could.
Then, then it's not a variant.
Could be, uh.
If it's far, three hundred feet, then we don't have to grant a variance, if it's within three hundred feet, we're supposed to grant a variance, which is the conversation we're having, and then the, the conditions under are, you know, we're supposed to take.
But it doesn't.
Such as.
Doesn't. Right, it doesn't sound like those conditions exist in this ask, is that what I'm hearing?
That's my take.
Right.
But if you guys, it, it might, it might be.
You know, your new warehouse can be that.
Yeah.
I don't want to come back here.
Correct, that's what I'm reading. I think so.
Tell me it's more than three hundred, I'm not coming up with a measure, so.
Don't send me up.
We're trying to get off the hook here about.
No, but. Well, because I feel like.
You don't have a reason for.
We don't have a reason for a variance, but if you go measure the way your sewer line has to go through that right of way and then goes to your foundation, and that's more than three hundred feet, then I'm, what I'm reading is that you're not compelled to join the system. Is that correct, Mr. Upson?
Sounds good to me.
I mean, that's, it's pretty simple, that's how, right, it looks to me, that's quite frankly, all we have there now is a sacred ground of the apartment.
Right.
Center of ass.
So go measure where it is, if it, if it turn, if you measure it and, yeah.
Turn it, do something. But that's what, I know where you're talking about, so you're out by the first place, right, so it's, I don't think you have to go very far, if you go eight acres, you must be out there pretty close to that.
What's that?
You must be pretty, you know, you're not far from three hundred out there.
Probably.
That, cause that first stretch of that narrow.
First, that's a hundred.
Right of ways, under feet. Right, and, yeah, pretty easy going on a two hundred feet. Yeah, I would think you'd be able to do that, and not have any expectation.
There you go.
Okay.
Are we okay?
Do anything.
Alright.
You get that thing out there at three hundred feet, you're good to go.
Okay.
And we'll adjust our ordinance in the meantime.
Alright, thank you, sorry, sadly, we're not, you know, more on top of it, but here we are.
I'm gonna see if you're under it too. Good luck, welcome to Harvard.
Thank you.
Uh, where are we?
Number five.
Thank you, number five, Jesse Upson and Christine Burke are here to discuss with the select board the concept of the community center being part of town operations, becoming the Hardwood Community Center. So, Jesse.
Team Center back.
The team center.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm Jesse Upson, and great. And last time we were here, we, um, asked for some money for software, which the town is, so we're buying directly. Um, and now we are here in, in kind of going down that rabbit hole, we realized that not knowing what model we are, it's holding it back, um, and doing very good research and with happy good people. Um, it seems like the most sense, um, this makes it for this to be part of the town. Um, and we come up with kind of a a plan for the next few months, um, with startup costs. And, um, seeing what it, also due to discussions, um, and then seeing what any three of the town can help with, and will, you know, fundraise.
So when you say become part of the town, like a department of the town, like, where are, we're talking about an employee, are we talking about things, like, you, you want budget through the town, what are we, what are we talking about?
Sorry, you know, the building is already part of the town, it's being paid for by the town, so this is not necessarily having employees, this is just the actual community center. And it happens.
Which building are we talking about, I'm sorry?
The police department.
Okay.
The other half.
Senior center.
Center side.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, you know, the heat and life are already, you know, it's the median, um, but this to get up and going needs and we paint and floor, um, pretty, you know, not too much cosmetically, but, um, enough to leave some help doing that, um, and then um, getting the software that the town is already purchasing functional to set up with different groups, who would be more today. Yeah, and that part is, um, the software is more about, we've been talking to early adopters, like people from you know, the civic standard and part of rescue and school and different people who are wanting to use the collaboration software and also the community space for different purposes, and so we wanted to bring them together first in the software, so they can start communicating, but also to do visioning. Um, to help the individual, individuals and individual representatives organization to, um, kind of land on a shape, like what's a win-win for you and your organization and the town and people. Right, so it's, it's three, three wins, but, um, not asking people to get involved to be volunteers or make a contribution, but asking people to come get involved in ways that create win-win win outcomes, so that it's all sustainable, so that everybody feels like being involved in community center making contributions to the town, getting involved in needs assessment and fulfillment benefits then, as well as the community members can. Yeah.
I once read a book, I think it was Sweet Thursday by John Steinbeck, but it may have been Kenner and Row, I'm not sure which, but there, it was Sweet Thursday, there was a character named Hazel, who was arguably one of the stupidest persons who ever lived. But Hazel had been convinced somehow that he was destined to be president of the United States. And it terrified him, and he tried to think it through, and Steinbeck said what Hazel was trying to do was to create a statue with pea soup. And as I'm listening to what you're saying, I feel like all I'm working with is pea soup. Um, like, I don't know enough, you, you came here before and asked for, for software and it seemed like a good idea, and now you've taken it another piece further, and I realize I don't really have any clear image of what you're talking about, do you have a set of bylaws? Do you have mission statements, do you have anything that I could get, you know, something solid about what it really is that you're doing?
Um, yeah, so the proposal that we submitted was about wanting to help people to get out of fighter flight, get out of survival mode. Um, and get into, you know, emotionally well-being, right, into a state of being able to function. Um, there's, there are people that need help for that, and then there are a lot of organizations, institutions, people here in town who are working on initiatives like that, but doing them separately. And so what our purpose was, we had to bring them together, remember the body that you said you'd like to find, create the central nervous system, and bring these people, bring it together, who are the resources, what are they contributing? What's available in the town, what do people need? Um, and how do we help people to find out what's available in a shared virtual space as well as in a community center, potential staff, volunteers, right, so it's like a new.
There's, there's a, right, currently, there's a disconnect between the people that wanna help and the people that need help. And there's.
So, I'm sorry, Opie. No, I was just gonna say, I, I hope this answers your question, Wiz, um, is, I think it's a good one. Um, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse and Christine, that, that basically what, um, Jesse and I had a conversation last week about, they, it sounds like there are a lot of questions about do we become our own organization, do we come, become a nonprofit, like, this is very new. They've identified that the public, um, that the PD building is has great potential, that this is needed in Hardwick, but there's still work that needs to be done to figure out the structure that needs to figure out things like bylaws, um, but before doing that, because there are lots of nonprofits and lots of organizations, um, as Christine was just saying, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, that the, that the ask is, can kind of quote-unquote operating under the town help to get this project off the ground before, um, you know, like, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but it's also like in the beginning stages, so there's not, like, I don't know if there are certain things that can be answered until this is tried and we were able to see how it works. And if, if the ask is to basically have a bunch of volunteers and, um, and have some money go to supporting the building, um, is, is that, is that more of like what is being asked, Jesse and Christine, like, like, can, can, can we maybe apply for some grants, can, can the town help support this project? Maybe similar to the way that we support the downtown designation project, like, can we have them under our wing as they get up and running? And then, like, and, but, but maybe there are more questions, like, well, what is that actually, what would it mean for us as a town, like, what would be, what, what would we be on the hook for if that were the case, is that kind of your question, Wiz?
I wanna know what they're really requesting, are you looking for a blind item on the budget, are you looking for permission to use the building? Are you looking for, you know, permission to use staff time? It's just not really clear what you're envisioning when you say, you know, functioning as, uh, under the town.
Right, so part of the visioning thing is that we actually want to invite people in the organizations, institutions and whatnot, from the town in to do, to be involved in collaboratively visioning how they might use that space to better meet the need of townspeople. And also even getting, you know, we have a lot of high school kids dropping out, we need to get one or two of them to come be involved in this early adopter, and like what, what can we, um, develop here, what could be available to be in here that would make a difference? In your.
So what we know is that there are needs in the town that aren't being met.
I understand that.
And we, we know.
But mine's a very nitty gritty sort of, what are you asking the town to provide you to be underneath the town?
For right now, we're asking for some money to help put into the building. And, and a way also for us to, if we do apply for grants, to be able to go through the town together.
Okay.
And to find out if the town is willing or able to use them financially for it, but we've been working on it for six months. Um, and, you know, that's great, we've been plotting along, and now we're saying, now there's this say that like, never going around the N D C, talking to people, finding out if they were even interested in um, getting connected with a collaboration.
Have you got a budget?
We've kind of started like that.
That's good. That's what this is.
But this is the first time.
There's, there's some pieces of this that if there's suc- successful components of this, will, could potentially save us money within the police budget in the long run, um, we've talked about bringing dispatching back, if we staff, if we staff this building twenty-four seven with either volunteer, trained volunteers, or part-time staff, police department staff, we pay the sheriff's department um, thirty, almost. Um, thirty, almost forty thousand dollars a year in dispatch services. So with successful participation by the community and trained volunteers, trained part-time staff. We could potentially keep those dollars in Hardwick, have somebody answering the phone in Hardwick when somebody is in crisis and calls. So that's just, that's just one piece of this. Um, the city of Brattleboro has put in a. Pilot project for, um, their police department, they're hiring civilians now to field calls. To receive citizen law complaints and triage, um, calls to the police. So there's like, this is the state, this is phase one, I think, you know, the way. It's, it's presented of trying to put together something that will kind of hold up our town. With some of the needs that aren't being met, providing the need, providing.
Sorry, we didn't mean to cut you off. I was just gonna say, can we, it sounds like. Um, and I'm sorry I'm not there in person to see, see everything, but, um, it sounds like there. Is some like fairly low hanging fruit, like just fixing, like putting a new coat of paint on the building and getting. Things to a place where it's comfortable and accessible for people to use the building. That seems like one ask, and then there's this other bigger question of. Like, what actually is going to be happening and how that's going to fit in to the Hardwick. Budget and our various projects, which I don't know if we're gonna be able to answer that tonight, like, it sounds like. And correct me if I'm wrong, Wiz, that's kind of like the question and how the town's supporting that. I don't know if there's enough. Information for us to be able to say tonight how we can support it, but, but maybe we can answer tonight how we can support. The building, um, and some of the upgrades that are needed for the building.
We do have the opioid settlement money that we're getting, um, annual payments of. And that money is, should be directed back into a community effort. To prevent substance abuse and in youth, substance abuse in young adults and. Part of the population that we want to serve at the community center is that targeted population.
So you're suggesting that this money would come out of that money? It's not still added to the tax?
It, it's funny that we got in the settlement that we put back into that building. Um, over the.
We've received fifty-six hundred and we're gonna get about ten thousand two hundred total. We've gone, yeah.
And we haven't spent any of it?
We just got the, like, in the last six months, we've gotten two payments.
It seems to me that that building, I guess, I have two thoughts about the buildings, the community. Well, the whole building, really, I mean, it's our building and we should be maintaining it because it's our building. Um, it should be, I think, our intent is to have that end open and, you know, the seniors have lunch there. Whenever they have lunch there and that's part of the agreement.
Yep.
Um, but otherwise, I know Mike's had programming in there sometimes, um, that he's led and. So I would imagine that it would be open to this type of programming. I would also suggest that it's already functional, that building.
Yes.
Like it could have upgrades, but you can walk in, there's heat, there's electricity, you know.
Yeah, I did that, I have that agreement with consolidated. Yeah, to run fiber.
So, right, I, so, I mean, I guess.
I don't have a problem with using that, that money for the community project like this. I'd like to see it move forward.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, yeah, I'd like to pull the trigger on something.
I still, I guess personally, I'm still in Wiz's camp where I'm.
I get it. I hear you loud and clear.
So I, I did too.
So who's gonna get this money? I mean, you've got this date completion date and you've got a total of three thousand dollars. Sixty dollars and fifty dollars an hour, sixty hours of fifty dollars an hour. But all you have is what will be accomplished, software setup, software outboarding training, complete research. So that this is what's gonna happen, but I don't see who's gonna do this.
That's the question about the department. That, that's the, that's the department part of the questions is, sorry. We know whose department it's gonna be.
Well, um.
Like, there are some, like, sub grants could be written under the town based on. Uh, for like any cake funds, for instance, that the five thousand dollar amount you. Potentially a grant could be written and maybe Tracy would be able to. At least advise on it, maybe not spend all of her time writing it, but you guys would be able to collaborate, no? I mean, there are ways to, there are some resources out there that aren't taxpayer money.
Well, and we, we have this opioid settlement, but this. It just feels real fuzzy, real, real.
I mean, from my perspective, that's because it is, it's something that we've never done before that hasn't, you know. I, I've seen other communities and there's in other places, but this is like, um, something new, um, it's, I. Yeah, so a lot of these things are unknowns, are like, you know, give us feedback as to what, you know, how this works. From your end of things, we'll take it, you know, and we'll take a step forward.
It was part of the community visit, it was one of the three things that came out of the community visit that. Uh, at least for kids or teens, that they wanted to have some sort of a community center. Um, and.
But that was like a swimming pool and.
We gotta start, we gotta start with this stuff, we can have that stuff.
I mean.
But this, at this point, at this point, I just think in terms of our budget, which is what we're asking. We have this opioid settlement money, which comes out of the PD department. It is also the Public Safety Building, which is also under basically the PD department. So we have, like, we basically have this line item of revenue. That right now doesn't have an expense because we don't have a program that really fits with why we got that money. And so if, if basically what we're saying is that we support these volunteers. Helping to make some upgrades to the building with that money, with that opioid resettlement money. Then those bigger questions, those can wait. If, if basically the only money that we're giving, quote-unquote giving. Is that, is that money that's already been earmarked for these kinds of projects, then we could wait for a later date to have a conversation about. The bigger question about this organization or initiative and how. Later down the line, the town might support it. If there's not really the ask of like creating a line item, I don't really see the risk. Because we're not, like, we're not saying, okay, we're gonna give you ten thousand dollars for the next five years for this project, we're just saying. This, this is in alignment with why we got this money. And it'll help support our building, it'll help support our community, it's not a big financial risk for us right now.
What kind of reporting requirements does that money have with it? That we can take the money and go to Acapulco.
No, no, so, no, so here's, this, this is like a common misconception. That, that this opioid settlement money is going to the police, okay? O- opioid addiction, substance abuse, and that this whole epidemic, the police had to deal with it. But it affected the community, it affected families, it affected schools. So the, the, it's not earmarked for the police department, and it continues. So we could go out and buy ten thousand dollars worth of Narcan with it.
So actually, that's exactly what I was thinking, because I was thinking, um.
But is that really solving the problem of substance abuse?
It is not.
Right.
Right. Or we just leave them in the river?
No.
What about, because we're still gonna have ones in the river right now.
Yeah.
And is our, is our police department currently op- operating at or under budget? For this fiscal year that we're in?
On there, no.
They're over, right?
Over, yeah.
And so our police department are pulling people out of the river. And this is some, and we're over budget doing that. And we have a unexpected small amount of money coming in on the revenue side. I'm just not thinking that that is completely unallocated money, like.
No, it's, but it's not, it's not earmarked for the PD.
It was sort of unexpected revenue.
Right, right.
If you just gave it to the PD, then you destroyed it and. At least this way.
Well, we need to zoom out, we need to like figure out that this isn't working and need to figure out how to start making it work. Because kids are dropping out of high school, sorry, I'm really emotional about this, but. I talked to Matt, who's running over the health center, and he's like. I had some around here today, call nine eight eight and no one answered the phone, that's the suicide hotline. Like, our resources are not working, they're overwhelmed, and we need to be taking care of our community. And that's what we're trying to do. And I, like, I've talked to a lot of amazing leaders in the town. Who are incredible resources, who want to be doing more and want the capabilities to be doing more. And don't have space, don't have the connections, and that's what we're trying to do. Is we're trying to make those connections. I've already been in touch with a few people from the police department. From like, that, um, wants to, like, they, you know, were, um. Having on resources and they, I've been speaking with them and they want to turn around and be volunteers and help. And they, they know how aware of work, they know how all of these services work because they've been in them. And they want to feel like they can give back. And there's a lot more of those people available once we start doing this. And I think the more opportunities we give our community to give back to our community. Like with the software, have a page where we can, how you can volunteer, things that are going on, calendar. So many people don't know what's going on in town, like, give them ways to connect. And come in and have a couple of talk, you know, having our time, a police hall that, you know, doesn't have a crime. Bring, bring them to the community center, have them meet with someone, chat with someone, so we know what's going on in the community and we can better take care of the people. We, we like to say that we want to resolve, you know, we have so many services here that they're solving the problem. That the fire start and we have to run and solve it, we really want to start laying some groundwork. For resolving it, so that we don't get so many worries.
So just to go back to, thank you both, just to go back to our agenda item, it, this. Like, as it's presented on our agenda, is that this is a discussion about a concept?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, it's not actually an action, I'm gonna propose that. We continue to have this conversation that somebody from the town manager's office works with Jesse and Christine to figure out. What, like, a lot of the questions that were asked tonight, so that way we can properly know moving forward how we can support this project. Unless there's another ask that, that you need, Jesse and Christine. Like, I don't think we need an official motion, doesn't seem like we do, other than a nod or. Uh, like, uh, am I wrong in that, that this is not really like an action item right now, but really a. Let's pursue this or not kind of question?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, Kayla, when we want to know next step, like, is this something that we can. You know, the, the town wants to support and whatever, like that, whatever that looks like, and if so, what are the next steps? What do you need from us? What do you, you know, what can we expect?
So our managers.
I think the, the purchase of the software, which they, the board has already agreed with. And the, if you could offer the training for the software to the different organizations that have. Expressed interest in joining this soft, the software collaborative, I think if we could get that. That you, you would be willing to do the training, we purchase the software and we start there.
Great, we already voted to approve that, right? So that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, but I.
We don't need to take any action there.
So, well, because that's part of the, the, the first phase of the, the money, so.
Which is, which pretty much, then that's already been approved.
Right.
The purchase of the software.
Yes.
So we can't purchase software without training.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we need to save, spend some of that opioid money to, to do this training?
Who's gonna do the training? Are you gonna do the training? Right.
So.
So they're volunteering to do this.
That can be considered in kind.
In kind, for what purpose?
Tell her about this.
Just, we pay onto that.
Keep track.
We keep track of it.
Right, so that when grant proposal comes along, you've already done this much in.
Right, right.
Yeah, I talked about consulting, the consulting world, and I actually did this information and. So it's presented in a way that I think. Um, and I don't know how the town looks that, you know, I'm deeply in passion, of course, I recognize everybody who.
Settlement, the, the money to do the improvements of the building.
Right, do we need to say something about that, or do you just do it?
Um, I think I'm just gonna do it.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and, and the seniors are picking out the colors, I was told today they have some color swatches.
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 Fourteen shades of gray.
Oh, there are a lot of turquoise. So, all right, okay.
Eleven, what?
Maybe, maybe ladder, okay, we're good. Thank you guys for coming, we're ahead of schedule.
No, it doesn't say.
Just kidding. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, all right, so.
What they're doing now than I was.
I'm a little clear, yeah.
That's what they're doing, they're trying, they're trying to fix something that's broke and they don't know.
Yeah.
You're not a hundred percent sure how we're gonna fix it.
We're looking at that flat tire right now.
Right.
We're about ready to dig into the truck.
Yeah.
Start to get the tools.
That's exactly it.
Yeah.
We just gotta figure out what those pieces.
Okay, I'm moving us forward to the budget.
Move us.
Move us, library and trails are here, it is, who wants to go first?
Well, I'll go first, because she'll lose.
Yes.
Okay, you all have copies.
Hang on.
We do, it's better by. It's the very last one.
The very last one?
The very last one.
No, that's, that, got it, all right, carry on. Please state your name, Norma Spalvy, oh, you already did, Norma Spalvy.
I'm here again. Well, do you have any questions?
Beautiful way to start, thank you.
Look it over, I guess you guys are ultimately decided with the budget, there are certain things that. Really, um, we don't have a lot of control over.
Right.
Like the last, um, insurance. That huge increase in the last insurance is mostly because we haven't really been counting for. Improvements that we have.
That's, that's partly my fault, because I was talking to Casey and Amanda, and they were like, you have two skidoo's?
Yeah, yeah, so that's. Haven't budgeted for what we have. The skidoo's.
It's very unfortunate that they now know we have all this.
So we're being honest this year on that last, on the insurance.
Norma, the only thing that jumped out at me on this is the publicity advertising signage. That you budgeted four hundred dollars last year, you spent seventy-nine, and you want four hundred again?
Um, so this year so far, we've spent two hundred and six dollars. So we've already spent a lot of the budget this year, that year before we didn't, but this year was. This year already we've spent over.
This season, right, so.
Just an off year, like it was an off year.
Yeah, it was a COVID year, there wasn't much.
Okay, there wasn't much going on, we didn't make new maps, we're making new maps right now. We are trying to use the. Um, Spark to do some of our signage. But, and then Aaron was so much, he made some fine for.
That's true.
So that's, we didn't have much, but this year we've already started.
This year we're trying to add additional of those maps and different things in the different kiosks that we have.
So we're gonna need some big map, but we're gonna do those, I think, next part, so it's gonna be a little bit.
All right, more questions about trails? No, question, Kayla, you good?
All good.
All good.
Thank you, Norma. Fast track your stuff.
Library, sorry, it's sorry, I'm just starting to feel, Dirty, I can't see you, please state your name. Thank you, Daphne.
So, yeah, we are up this year for two.
So, yeah, we are up this year for two particular items, one fuel. And the other.
Fuel and insurance.
Fuel and insurance, yes.
I assume the insurance is because you hired a person with a family?
Yes.
Instead of just a single person, yeah.
Right, so.
It's a huge hit.
Wow, it's a huge hit, that's, so I'm a little up here.
It happens every time, it happens on highway, it happens on PD. Too bad you couldn't discriminate. Good joke.
Single people only.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
Just hire single people with no kids. So we got lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All these years and now, it's, it was very unlikely we were going to do that again.
Yeah. So that's, that's the big challenge. I can't.
We did go down a little on salary because we're hiring someone who doesn't have the level of experience, um, going to go into the role. But, um. So we had some savings on insurance, I mean on payroll, but offset by insurance.
Big time.
Big time, yeah.
Why did your internet go down? It's great.
Um, it's because we're just doing it differently previously.
Oh, I thought it was great.
They have, um, first light and the way it works is they get like these credits on their bill.
Yeah.
And so we're often carrying a credit balance. Well, at one point the auditor said, oh, you know, gross up those credits as revenue. And then, you know, net it and then show your expense higher. Well, now they've said, no, don't do that, just, just pay the bill when it's due. And, and let the credits accumulate, so that's why it changed. So like, they really do only pay. Maybe four months out of twelve, that two hundred and fifty dollars.
So this is an actual, this is actual, okay, alright.
So that's, it's just kind of a, a change in how we're looking at it.
Fair enough.
Makes my life.
Okay, that's good. More questions about the library budget?
This is, this is more about the cosmetics, I suspect it is substance, but I'm used to seeing parentheses meaning. A negative.
Yep.
A reduction. And I see all these friends of the library things are all listed as negatives. Really? To me.
Where is that?
No, it's just.
Bottom. At the bottom.
Listed as negatives, I think, because they're taking off from the total, correct?
Exactly, yeah, so like, you take their operating and library bill and you add those two together. And then you subtract essentially the courier revenue, the miscellaneous income and the fund balance contribution to show what they actually need from the town. That's. Yeah, it's, it is a little.
And then the hundred twenty-five thousand dollar town appropriation.
That was actual in fiscal year twenty-two.
I'm sorry, what, Casey?
That was the actual amount in fiscal year twenty-two, because you're, you're left on an actual, so the actual appropriation was one twenty-five, one seventy-one. And, and last full year.
And so the fund balance is what's left over.
They have their own.
The fun, right, the fun balance was what was left as of six thirty twenty-two. Seventeen thousand, six thirty-one. Well, right, that might be in the front year now. That, so.
No, the, um, the fund balance contribution for twenty twenty.
Okay, so when Lisa and I talked, I, I, maybe she, maybe we weren't there, but I said to her, I was like. It, it just said miscellaneous income fourteen thousand, and I said, so, so we need to slip that out, so.
They split those into.
Correct, because there's gonna be some miscellaneous income, there was almost twenty-nine hundred in this year twenty-two, so we did it for a thousand. But if you had intended to do miscellaneous income plus fourteen thousand and fund balance contribution, that would decrease. The ass to one forty-two, nine sixty-seven. She's certainly, I mean, that, because that's leading a seventy-six hundred dollar locker. And the fund balance, so that's certainly something.
It must have been, oh, I thought it said a five hundred now, yeah, we should do a little better. Now, no, we wanna go over. Particularly since we're in the building area. Uh, we are going to need, we are trying to use at least a thousand of it. For innovation and.
Why retreat?
Why retreat?
So, because there is gonna be some miscellaneous income, so we need that worked out. But, what do you, what are you thinking for the fund balance contribution?
So, yeah. Now, these.
Thought it was getting.
Still leaves a fifty-six, okay.
Well, I would much rather have someone from that go than I would.
Well, much more likely Tuesday.
No, not only that, I mean, they, I mean, he was very qualified.
His life is from St. Charles, right?
Oh, no, but you know what I'm saying, I'm very happy.
The, the, Diane's, with Diane's experience, she can hit the ground running.
Yeah.
She won't have to.
Yeah.
She knows everybody, she knows how it works.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, I don't look at any bad news, bad for that guy.
So.
Yeah.
We were probably gonna pay the same insurance either way and.
Right.
Yeah, we saved a little bit of money.
So, so what came up before was we were.
Managers report.
In the very beginning of the select board meeting, the managers report, we were talking about, um, a grant. For.
CRRP grant.
Oh, yeah, crap grant.
Correct, yeah.
CRRP.
My God, focus people, let's go. So, um, yeah, so we were talking about that and our question, we had questions and we said, let's just wait till Jody's here and we'll circle back. So this is not to do with your budget, but with that. Manager's report requires a letter of support from the. Or there's a request for a letter of support from the town and we were wondering, I guess, what were we wondering?
Well, I was wondering where, where, where the project is at.
So you were wondering that and then Sherry was wondering what particular you were.
The select board has a policy that we see the grant narrative, so we see what is being applied for. I don't know whether Tracy's gotten to see that, whether, uh, I mean, is there a match to that grant? What is that grant? What's the amount? What, what will, yeah, I get that it's supposed to go to the building because everything does now. But what is it? What, what are we supporting?
Yeah, so. Uh, the grant is state, um, art of funds that have, um, several, four categories. Um, municipal is all wastewater, but there's also a category for, um.
Libraries.
No, this is not that grant, this is a category that's, this is for pandemic affected entities. And Andrew's writing this grant, um, I have actually not done around the edits yet. So I haven't exactly seen how it's drafting, the ass around pandemic influence, but. It's worth it, it's, it's worth a try, it's a first come, first served grant and it's, um, they have a big pot of money.
How much?
What's the? Forty million.
But what's the amount that the grants are being given for?
They didn't have it.
There's no, there's no max. Yeah, it's a rolling, it's a rolling deadline.
We're looking to see the narrative, but the answer's all those questions.
Okay.
We will share the narrative with the answers to all those questions.
Okay.
And the, and the total ask.
The total ask will be six hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay.
And we're going to ask for the same amount from the Department of Libraries.
Okay.
Because we believe that's the most we could possibly need to get this building built. I don't think we need that much.
Still six hundred thousand, sure.
Well, we don't know because we don't have a budget yet. We have, so the update. Is that we moved to a construction management model.
Really?
We hired, um, company out of Burlington, New York. Who, um, have been astounding, made a, a huge video about why they wanted this job and all they were going to do. The president of the company is from Newport, um, it's a whole family of electricians and they own several electrical companies in Newport, and they have. They have a, a, a mission to get the price down by really hitting on subcontractors and other things. So they're stacked up the list, so it's a more collaborative process than hard.
So how much?
And all of your funding sources will.
We have two point four million. I think we're going to need. Two point four million for a project that was supposed to be one point five. Um.
At what point does it become too much?
Well. I think the last bid was for three million. I think we're going to end up being able to build it, this is just my making a guess, but I think with this group and. Um, not being at the peak of the inflation bubble, we, um, will likely hit. Um, between two point six and two point eight. So, um.
Okay, so you're, so back to the grant for a minute, so a letter of support from us to apply to the C R, C R R P. Um, and. Uh, one thing we suggested earlier is that, assuming that that's time sensitive and you don't wanna wait for us to review that in January. That, um, the select board could, someone, we could make, uh, we could move to have the town manager. The community development coordinator.
Yeah.
But she could, we have community development, we could have the town manager, um, provide a letter of support. Yeah. After the details of the grant are shared with. The community development coordinator and the town. Okay.
Yeah.
So moved.
Oh, there we go. Any more discussion about providing a letter of support? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. That's for. Any opposed? Motion, motion carries, oh yeah, everybody. Good, so we got that, so thank you for the. Library, for the trails. Thank you for the library. Um. Do we have to go, what if, what else, can we go home? We have to go through the whole.
I've got a few things I wanna talk about and just kind of summarize, so, um. One of the things that came this afternoon is, um, we really need to get an updated grant list figure. Because the figure that I last had was as of July first, twenty twenty-two. It does appear that we've had some sort of significant increase, we're trying to get to the bottom of that. So that I don't really wanna talk about the tax rate because I think it's a lot better than it looks. Because I think, once we have that actual correct grant list figure, I'll know more.
Yeah.
Um, but, over this last two week period, um, just kind of. You know, some of the things that have come up, um, is. We received our twenty twenty-three insurance bills from the LCT, which then enabled me to get a better handle on what this would look like.
That's good.
Unfortunately, um, we have been sort of seeing this steady decrease for, since I've been in Sweet Year. And we also were able to take, um, what we call contribution credits, um, for claims history and that sort of thing. Um, our contribution credits for twenty twenty-three are half of what they were last year, so, um. Again, so, and, and some of the insurances went up, so I've had to take that on consideration, so all the insurances have been adjusted. Um.
Is this, is this all in the budget that we were, that we saw, like, if we look today in our.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They've made any changes.
Okay.
It's just, I'm saying over the last two weeks.
So kind of the insurance numbers generally have been trued up. According to an actual.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's kind of, and as other little things came in here or there, I've been able to firm up. Different things, one thing that I did kind of wanna talk about is health officer. Um, Eric's our health officer because we don't have a health officer, nobody wanted to step up to do it. It's been a discussion over the last couple of years about hiring somebody to do it. Um, is that anything that we, right now, we just have like a six hundred dollar a year stipend. Um, there's been discussion about, wow, that's really. He will, he will. He will get it.
Oh, I will.
Yes. So it's, it's small, but, um, there is a lot to the job and there can be, and so.
Deputy does.
It's, it's been brought up before, you know, do we wanna hire somebody to do this?
So we.
Well, John Jordan did it, you're not.
I am.
Oh.
Richard Brochu was our.
It's not a small job.
No.
As you know now, it's not a small job. I went to the training years ago and I'm sure it's more work than it was.
Well, we're about to get the rental inspections taken off our plate, hopefully. So that's the only part of it, though, but that's a pretty big part.
Not doing very much to help.
Well, they're supposed to be, they've passed the law.
Well, that, but that's not enough.
Anyway, so you're right, do we wanna, so, but who would do it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you'd have to like post and be like, you know, where you increase the incentive for somebody to wanna step up and do it? Or you like literally. For all, like.
I suspect that there are many people out there that don't even know what it is and that it exists, which is. Which goes back to my, let's.
Working on that.
Define.
Yeah.
What these different positions are, so that if there are people out there interested in serving in them.
So.
So that.
I actually did a front porch forum post, a few of them back in. April, May, before the decision was gonna expire and that's what sparked the discussions and people were like. Wow, this is like crazy and it's five hundred dollars, like, they were just kinda like, like, why would anybody wanna do that?
Right.
Because I put the, the description, here's what this person is supposed to do and everybody was like, yeah, no.
Really well defined.
Yes.
This is not.
Is.
Didn't do that.
Yeah, it. In times it could create a liability for us.
Yes.
Could we between now and.
Is that.
Put together a job description, put together a process so that we can build it into the budget? Can we build it into this budget at this late hour?
Well, not tonight, but I, I guess we can talk about for next day.
Well, we wouldn't even know what the, I mean, I don't think we can start, I just.
I think the job description is already defined.
Yeah, the job description's done, but.
Yeah.
But the process and.
Yeah, but how do you hire somebody to, to do a little, a few hours of work random, at random?
That's what I'm saying, you'd almost have to do it like.
It's like the animal control.
So much. Something, yeah.
Yeah, but you can't, Kaylee, you're, you can't take.
Okay, I'll go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. I was just gonna say, can we roll this conversation into the conversation about the community health, uh, community center?
No.
We could, but I think they're very different things.
But anyway, I mean, we don't want to kind of carry on with that, I guess I'm just saying. It is something that has been brought up before and we are in budget season, so anyway. Um, and then a couple, just a couple other little things, so I separated out the buildings, like, there are two worksheets now. Because, like, we had to take the, I took my way, and so now we have all the buildings and buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, underlying items, the cemeteries had requested an additional eighteen thousand dollars for like stonework and this sort of thing. In my recent revisions, I sort of made up a suggestion and proposed. That we do six thousand over three years rather than eighteen thousand all at once. Because I don't really think that they can do all of the work in one year, um, so that's just something I. Um, so that's just something I did to.
I have a question about that.
I do too.
Like, those things should really, I mean, if the. So. You've been researching, but it seems to me that the cemetery should have been managed over the years such that the.
On their own.
Yeah.
They would have perpetual care.
I don't believe that's what occurred.
I mean, if if they are, they are.
Yeah, or these are. Cemeteries that are.
We're talking, yeah, Fairview and Main Street, the ones that are that request and Maple Street, maybe there's three, like. There's three of them, I think.
There are three.
Yeah.
Maple Street.
Maple Street, Fairview.
Maple Street's been taken care of. The daughters of the American Revolution are gonna do the repairs.
Okay, but I'm I'm just thinking structurally.
Yeah.
As organizations, they have their own commissioners, their own rules. They are expected, there are state laws that they're expected to follow, that they don't. Um.
Allegedly, we don't. I hadn't heard that.
Pardon me? Um, if the town court's word is good for it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um. And they should be self-funding.
That's the idea.
Now, in the past, we have. We have funded them, you know, it's not.
Yep. But this is asking for more funding for additional services.
This is another issue that need we, the town needs to get its own cemeteries organized, and then this is.
And that's why I just said, you know, the ask with eighteen thousand dollars, which we originally had in here, so I shed at the very. Kind of best case scenario, I would say we do six thousand over three years if you decide to do that is. I I just.
Well, Casey. Don't we already just talking? Just thinking about our own cemeteries, like. Separating this ask out from that, we already have a fund balance. For cemeteries, correct? It's like roughly seventeen thousand dollars.
For our cemeteries?
That's already saved.
Correct.
It's in a capital fund, I remember seeing a capital fund.
So it's a perpetual fund for the cemeteries?
Like Sam Bourne has. You've tens of thousands of dollars like for that type of thing.
Right, because we're, because basically when we, when we sell a lot, we're we're giving that. Six to twelve hundred dollars to the town and it's earmarked for the cemetery. Um, but there's already a ba- like we already have balance, a fairly healthy balance for cemetery, for town cemeteries, right?
Some cemetery upgrades, we have a balance.
We have a capital and a regular, though, like the that you're not seeing, but we have like the cemetery fund is completely separate. From the general fund set aside for cemetery upgrades, so that's an addition to the cemetery.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Are we, are we gonna vote on this budget at the next meeting?
No, I. Given the town meeting's on for March seventh, we're probably gonna shoot to do it January fifteenth.
Okay, could we talk about the cemeteries?
Yes, yes, um. Okay, so I think that's it for tonight, so just the um. In the summary here, so showing I just barely got with two, you know, we took two thousand away from the library, so. From the draft you had in your pocket, it just went down two thousand, so four point two percent increase right now.
That's a lot better than it looked last.
Yeah, well, you know what it was, it. There was a formula issue um with like. Cause I was like, there's no way I'm not just going up four hundred thousand, it was, there was a formula issue when I checked it, so. So relieved.
Wame it on Excel.
And so that's why you literally have to go through every single, yeah.
Is there a point when the listeners are gonna come off of the budget because we don't have.
They're not, well, and so next year you won't see. Be any actual, but there's still an actual in fiscal year twenty two.
Okay, so. And in that section, just to note that it says part time and elected.
Right.
I think it's part, it's part time and appointed.
Oh, right.
Right, Casey?
Well, some is elected because there's select ward in there.
Right, there's appointments as well.
You're right.
I mean.
You know, we could just call it as other people, like.
Yeah.
It's really.
The first number. Yeah, so on your first page, basically, you get to drag, step, red.
Yeah.
Percent increase. Five point four percent.
Yeah.
So, but that's with no uh.
Yes, that is a hundred and twenty five thousand.
And then that is our real.
We do have. About forty six hundred dollars in new appropriations this year. We haven't got petitions, but we sort of.
But the thing is that, so I I spent some time with you trying to grab my head around these percent increases today and then. I think what Casey said earlier is there's no point in. Really focusing on these percent increases to the tax. Rate because we don't. Yet have a firm number, we're we're gonna get a better estimate grand list.
That's present July first, and so I will have something updated, and I think that that's gonna make those numbers look better.
It's not the grand list never came in before. Like May or something.
Right, but we get. So often.
Right.
No, it's July one that it gets set, right? Which is why we don't set, we don't actually set the tax rate. That's why all this sheet, that top sheet is really. A bit of mumbo jumbo, and we're not vote, we're not voting on that, we're voting on the budget.
The total dollar amount.
The total dollar amount for the budget, but this is just to give people an idea.
It's just, yeah, it's just kind of a. Yeah, it's like just a tool for them to sort of be like, oh, okay, how much my taxes may be gonna go up kind of thing, it's just.
But it, but the trouble with that is that we're.
Well, generally.
Right.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, we tell them at town meetings generally what it is.
I was looking back and it it varies a bit. Off of what was on the sheet would actually.
Most significant.
Yeah. Percentage.
Well.
One pass.
Yeah, so last year we estimated that it was gonna be. We said it's gonna be a three point one, three point five percent increase, and it was a decrease.
Because the grand list was higher.
Cause the grand list went up, so.
Yeah.
We were off.
Much closer estimate. Then.
In a good way.
So some years. That's actually must be in a bad way, no, because we never.
No, because the grand list doesn't tend to go down, usually, unless like a lot of things burned or something.
We're not in bad shape, given that the cost level is eight percent.
And our budget projection is to go up about four and a half, so it's sitting in a pretty good spot.
We took um. We lowered the average cost of fuel.
Yes, because.
Based on her.
Um, and then when I said six oh seven last month, I love diesel, I'm diesel, it was six oh seven, so I don't think we're gonna. See a lot of savings in the diesel to carry but fuel oil, we had a decent delivery at three thirty three, so it was really.
The big thing is stability there, because if it's stable enough, they'll give you a guaranteed price for the year.
Right. So I took a two year average. Two year average of the gallons and I did four fifty a gallon and that's, so it would, I would maybe lower everything here. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
So things are looking good.
Okay.
And but we're gonna, so I'm sorry, I'm pretty sure this within the calendar was in our packet, but. Um, the timeline, we're looking at doing, when are we signing the warning?
Let me go to the timeline here.
Just to, sorry.
Let me jump in with the history minute here.
All right.
In eighteen sixty four, Hardwick was paying bounties for men to go. Fight in the Civil War of three hundred dollars ahead.
Paying bounty.
We're paying bounty.
What does that mean?
It means that it was a bonus, that we're bribing them.
Oh, you get paid if you sign up to go.
You know what the grand list was? That year, you know what the grand list was that year? We're paying these guys three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Brand list was about seventy, but was about forty seven hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars, big money.
Wow.
But. But what is it compared to our brand list, a hundred and ninety three million dollars? Three hundred of seven, forty seven hundreds, I don't know. That is a hogging big amount of money compared to the grand list of the town.
Right.
It's just good. Better light longer.
Twenty two thousand.
Last day, last day to warn is, is February fifth is the last day to warn. Which we don't have, that would be a, looks like it's gonna fall on us.
So and then so one twenty six is the first day to warn, so if we approve at the fifteenth meeting.
This is.
You might have to do a special meeting to approve the.
Nineteen.
Our January meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, nineteen, oh, yeah.
So, oh, actually, we're gonna have a meeting on the second of February.
Yeah.
Right, February second and ninth.
Right, but we have to post the warning, the first day to warn it is one twenty six.
Yeah, but the last day is February fifth, right?
Major.
Does that mean the last possible day? Okay.
And then nineteen, so.
They're gonna take that with that.
All right, so in any case, we have two more meetings.
Yes, we're not gonna approve.
Be gone.
Look at approving this.
And we're gonna talk about dedication and cover next time?
Yeah, are we gonna do the in executive session, or do we do it in?
Usually.
We usually do it.
This.
Make it a surprise.
Yeah, so we usually do it as an executive session, but. It's not really a proper use of executive session, but we just like it's. Just gives a little surprise, like it's.
Reveal.
A little reveal. But we'll do that next time.
Okay.
And, uh, all right, so then. Knowing that, select board reports new business, old business.
I got a bunch. Just kidding.
I'll fly it.
Can't think of anything.
We're we're gonna, I'll I'll just report. Things are looking positive on the yellow bar in front and um. We are, we've extended our bid deadline to January nineteenth. To in order to bring in. The new bidders into the process and both of them are very engaged. And uh, so we're very optimistic on that prime.
Right.
Merry Christmas.